Can I have everybody's attention for a moment, please? Can everybody silence your telephones so we don't have any instructions or anything?
Thank you.
Well, you go out and tell people in the same group that we're running out of room here. The initial comprehensive plan was a month ago when we advertised that you cannot move from meeting place. So when people are ready to speak, like that are on the general whatever. Yeah, we'll just, we'll just have you spring the names.
Can I have everybody's attention? The first part of the meeting, first few minutes, we're having a comprehensive plan. It was on the schedule prior to everybody getting on the agenda. We'll get that out of the way and then we'll start it with the regular part of the meeting. And then if they're not in a room and they're ready to speak on the agenda, you're not going to ring off it.
I think we might want the public comments first because we have that.
That's Tim's job. I don't run the meeting.
We have meetings on the comprehensive plan and that we'd like to address before that gets voted on.
Yeah, I think that will indicate that. So surely, surely we will be able to talk on that since the public here.
All right.
Okay. Jane here. It's a hard year. Okay, we will go ahead and call the meeting ordered. It's a little after six o'clock. The first thing we will do is approve the minutes for the March 21st meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Thank you.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Most prepared. Okay, the following members present. Sue Anderson. Pamela White. Jim Key. Jamie Schonberger. Kim Sheumaker. Martha Bernardino. Glenn Walter.
Laura is on her way, but waiting for the, had to wait for the lady to get there.
Okay. We have a forum. And we are going to start with the comprehensive plan as it was on advertised for six o'clock. So John Barry from Bean Wells and that who has worked on the comprehensive plan. We're running this part of the meeting. All right. But any questions can be ready for an answer. Now we can't hear. Yeah. Just ask everybody to please keep it down. Yeah. Is that anything out there? Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sheumaker. I'll just be brief. My name is John Barry. I'm with firm Bean Wells and that. We were contracted by the county to update the comprehensive plan. The last update was in 2007. We took the format and the framework of the previous comprehensive plan. Worked with a team of stakeholders, a group of eight. Updated the plan, updated the previous information, worked with stakeholders, had two previous or had two public meetings. One in, on February 7th in Beatersburg and one in, on February 8th in Attica. Took public comment. Revised the plan, added minor comments. Major comments included public input on trails, natural resources, things like that. Comprehensive plans are required to be amended once every five to 10 years by state statute. Plans are utilized by counties, local agencies to apply for grants, federal grants, update master plans and other things. For trails, other county amenities and adopt master plans for capital improvement plans. With that, I'll open up any questions.
Okay, anyone with any public comment on the comprehensive plan?
Answer it. We just need to ask everybody to be quiet. I'll see how.
Are we going to announce the people out? Yeah, I gotta get a comment.
Okay. If someone would like to make a public comment, come up to the table here and state your name. Oh, okay. Each person will be allowed five minutes. And Laura. And Laura. Oh, I could say the one from over here.
I'll go ahead and start. Good evening. I'm here tonight with.
If you could, if you could sum it up for the. There you go. Thank you.
I'm here with many of my neighbors from Grand Creek. I live on Grand Creek. As well as 800 plus petition signers from across Fountain County. I've knocked on hundreds of doors. I have provided each of you, you'll see, with copies of the study utilized and submitted to Madison County, Indiana. Entitled Large-Scale Solar Farms: Their Worth Effect. As these large-scale solar farms become more prominent, more data is obtained. And counties and states across the country are pushing back on the supposed economic benefits. Most recently, Boone County, Indiana adopted a two-year moratorium while they were redoing their master plan, comprehensive plan, if you will. A number of other counties have adopted more moratoriums. I think the number is eight at this point regarding solar farms as the data continues to be collected. This data highlights the efficiency, the inefficiency of solar arrays together with the long-term environmental impact on our farmland. If you'll please also note that I did it in blue, so it's distinguished. That estimates the cost of decommissioning, which is staggering. Our county commissioners have sold out our residents for the empty promises of savvy salesmen. Our county, with its woods, wildlife and rural character, is one of the more beautiful counties in this state. As soon as the, but soon the landscape will be replaced by glass and steel as our current ordinances. Offer unbridled opportunities for these solar companies to locate in our county with minimum standard setbacks and protections for our current residents' property values. At last count, seven companies are nosing around as an estimated 14,000 acres are being considered for condemnation. It's about, it's just under five and a half percent of the land total in Fountain County. I'm asking the planning commission tonight to table a vote and recommendation on this comprehensive plan until your May 23rd meeting. This will allow all of you time to digest this current article as well as additional materials will be submitted to you by our attorney, Michael Andrioli. To provide detailed and studied information regarding the reasons these solar farms will not be beneficial for Fountain County. This delay will give additional voice to the opponents of solar farms who have been generally excluded from this process. This proposed comprehensive plan has been rushed through without legitimate public input. I get that there were meetings. Two people at a meeting, I'm sure it counts as a meeting, but we all were sadly not aware. The ordinance, we, the citizens oppose this type of approach and we believe that we should have a thorough submission of the facts at hand in order to vote on this master plan in good conscience. Especially as it applies to large area solar farms. In the past, this board has gone on record taking votes and passing matters to commissioners with only four members voting in favor of a particular recommendation. As you have a nine-member board, this is clearly against the rules and state statutes. We have meeting notes. I'm sure you've seen them. Our citizens can no longer stand still while certain elected and not elected officials attempt to ram through legislation. Which will ultimately be harmful to our property values and way of life. This planning commission can go a long way in restoring public confidence. Allowing time to read the literature that has been developed showcases the harmful effect of solar rays. The inefficiency of this type of energy production, the continued loss of farmland in the detriments to that. And the environmental concerns in the near and long term. We request that a more thoughtful approach be initiated. Please provide us with time to submit materials that have been generated around the country and even in our surrounding counties. That present a clearer picture of the limitations and detriments of large scale, excuse me, large-scale solar farms. Thank you.
Next. Are you opening it up to questions? Just public comment, no questions. We're just, you just say what's on your mind. I was informed today that my farm ground out on the Stonebough Blacktop has been condemned. How could that have happened without me knowing about it? Have you seen the areas that's in the condemned zone? Yeah. Because the way this means that people call me after, I can, I can talk to you about that. This is not a question and answer. This is, this is for people to come up. Or talk about comprehensive plan right now, what this man is here for. And then we'll move into another meeting, which is actually a planning commission meeting. So. Well, my question is, should I have been notified? There is nothing that has been condemned, is the answer. Thank you. I'll remember you said that.
Amber Rourke. So I'm here to talk to you today about the comprehensive plan. As you heard, we did retain a lawyer. We spoke with him and he wanted to emphasize how important the comprehensive plan is. That it's not just a tool to get your grant. That solar should absolutely be part of that. He says that it's potentially disastrous for accounting not to move that. So I'm here today to ask you guys to table that. He also stated that it should have been done at the area planning mission level, all of you, that it should not have been done with the commissioners. So I would like for you guys to table it and take it some time and at least look through it. And make recommendations to, to the commissioners before you pass it. It probably should have been in the comprehensive plan originally. I've added a draft that was sent to an individual where the solar zoning was in there to investigate. Places that wind and solar should be placed. But for some reason, it didn't get passed down to the red people on that board. So page 16 and 17, please take a look at that. I'm just curious to why it was taken out. It was important for the county to have that originally. So I'm pleading with you guys, please table it and take a look at it, at least consider it.
Tammy, I note, and your comprehensive plan, when you presented it, a statement was made about the fact that Fountain Central has 100% free reduced lunches and breakfast for their kids. And you made it sound as if that is very important because that affects the type of housing. Fountain Central does have 100% free reduced or free breakfast lunch. Because Fountain Central applied for a three-year grant and approved. Not because no student in Fountain Central is going to afford to pay for it, because we have a grant. So that should be reflected instead of being used to skew to get something. And that was all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tia Holmes. I'm kind of following what I found out about the comprehensive plan. And the last comprehensive plan that I reviewed does not match. You guys are voting on tonight. I was not sent to revise one, so I'm asking for my name to be removed from the one you have tonight. I just don't feel like I was properly involved in it. And then when I found out that one came out and I said, no, this is it. So I didn't get it. And I don't feel like I should be included in something I didn't get it. So that's all I'm asking.
Mine's dated February 2024, except that most current.
Carol Owens, I'm following what Tammy had brought up about this comprehensive plan is more or less geared toward. The ERA, I feel like, I mean, we look at the school system, you dated it in 2006 for some reason. And I, I think that is so far out of the whack. And also the population, we started in 1980 where it's the highest. And there have been some typewares too on this stuff.
Thank you. Anybody else on the comprehensive plan? That's all. Okay, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. I've got an opportunity to address you on the comprehensive plan. I don't have anything written up or read through the one you got.
What's your name, sir?
My name is Dane Molsberg, New Brook Township. I find it amazing that the single largest issue has drawn an enormous crowd to our courthouse tonight. And there's only one single word of solar written in the entire comprehensive plan. I find that amazing that the single largest topic that's addressing potentially 14,000 acres of land for our county. Only gets one word out of all those pages. And I think, and I understand that we geared it towards economic revitalization area. And there's a whole topic, we're a whole different committee and council on that. But our county is the dog of the egg. We have some manufacturing facilities here and we'd like to see more bedrooms here. But our ag ground is productive. It is getting more productive every year with the farmers we have. So there's no way we can say as it is agriculture, that it is somehow compromised. It has not ceased to produce crop in the last seven years. It has not decreased in production. And also in your plan, we don't have any definitions as to what we're calling words. It's back to the old Bill Clinton, what it and is really is. So what is my industry? What is heavy manufacturing? What is agriculture and what it is not? This is not a, we're Fountain County. We're not Tivicoon County. We're not White County. We're not Benton County. We're Fountain County. And those definitions need to be what Fountain County says they are in Fountain County. Not what it is in some other, some other county in the state. And that's all I ask for you to consider looking at the plan you have on the table for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the comprehensive plan? Yep.
All right. All right. So I wasn't sure if I was going to do this now or later. I'll do it now.
Dane.
Andy.
Berks. I'm just standing for the record.
All right. So basically, I've been all this thing, our comprehensive plan is an important roadmap. For our community, where we're going and how we're going to get there. And part of that, our comprehensive plan, zoning comes from a comprehensive plan. You cannot have zoning unless you've had a comprehensive plan, right? You won't know how to make your zoning unless you have your roadmap and how you're going to get there. So this is going to talk a little bit about zoning. According to a document published by Purdue Extension Service, the purpose of zoning is simply described in the following statement. Historically, zoning seeks to prevent one landowner from harming his or her neighbor by engaging in incompatible use. I'm going to repeat that. Zoning seeks to prevent one landowner from harming his or her neighbor by engaging in an incompatible use. Common sense tells us that commercial solar energy systems are simply electricity-producing power plants. And power plants are not compatible with agricultural use. In Fountain County, we have lost sight of what the true intent of zoning is. It has become clear that our zoning ordinances are no longer protecting neighbors. But instead, in the case of commercial solar energy systems, they are specifically written with the intent of only protecting the solar developers. This reason alone is enough to pause the current flood of solar and revisit the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. If you are still on the fence, then please consider the fact that Ranger Power, a solar developer currently building in Fountain County or currently planning to build. Was allowed to write the very regulations that are used, that it uses to regulate itself. And that's documented in April 22nd, 2021, area plan or advisory plan commission minute. I have a copy of that if you want to see it. Additionally, two of our commissioners have been out there starring in promotional videos for Genex. Which, as you know, is another solar company that has submitted an application in Fountain County. I could continue, but these are, but these, just these examples alone, it is easy to see why Fountain County residents are feeling like they are no longer being represented by their local government. In conclusion, I'll simply ask, are you willing to work to correct these past mistakes and represent the residents of Fountain County? Or will you choose to represent the developers of commercial flooding? We have over a thousand signatures on our petition. And if you remember, I told you we had 200 several months ago and you commented, Tim, that most people probably have not read the petition. We don't even know what they're signing. These a thousand people know what they are signing. And this says that we want a new solar ordinance. We want you to take the time to look at it. That includes solar ordinance, comprehensive plan, everything. The direction of our county is important to the people and we would appreciate you remembering that. And so here's all the thousand signatures you can take the time to look through. Thank you. Why is that one? Sorry.
Anyone else on the comprehensive plan? People up there. Now I want to speak on the comprehensive.
Yes, Dave. Dave Phillips, I'm a landowner, farmer of Shawnee Township. Lived up in that area my whole life. And I do not want to see this come in. I don't want my ground being condemned or obsolete like this plan calls for to get all this stuff moved through. It's just, it's, it's not good for the county. And I just want my name and on the record for stating that. If you need to, you know, look this over real close, put a hold on it. Come through.
Thank you. Buddy else for the comprehensive plan? Anybody out in the stock? Can you see if anybody out there wants to say anything?
My name is Jessica Anderson. I feel like the petition should have been the finale, so I'm a little nervous to follow that. That was a pretty big one. But my, my comment just kind of dovetails off of Dane's. I actually like the flow of the comprehensive plan, how it's written. I was really impressed by all of the work that was done. And I'd just like to read though a couple of sentences because I think that it actually, if I can pull it up here, let's see. So the third sentence of the main section says. Fountain County possesses a friendly rural atmosphere that residents want to protect for the enjoyment of future generations and agricultural productivity. I think that that just really hits home with what is bothering everybody about this whole thing. For all of the analysis and the trends that are presented in this document, I think it would be prudent to have an analysis to show how much acreage we're going to lose to solar. We should know what the ratio is going to be with the projected projects. Because another part of the plan does say that we're supposed to make changes in modest ways, incremental ways. So that there aren't unintended consequences that we can foresee. To me, this sort of has like the feel of a gold rush or a boom or some kind of bubble that would burst. It's like a lot happening really fast. It would almost seem better if we had a couple of pilot projects and then we see how those go before we adopt all of these subjects coming in. But since we are hiring to have analysis done, I think it would be prudent to show, one, what is the projected ratio at the end of this? For actual tillable ag ground remaining versus ground that's occupied by solar? And also what is the impact that that's going to be to jobs? Because the comprehensive plan says that we need to preserve the jobs that we have and build on that. Well, if we lose half of the tillable acreage here, most of the people I know are related in the ag industry in some way or somebody in their family is. You know, you've got your grain truck drivers and your everybody else. If we lose some huge component of the already established industry, what does that impact look like for jobs? And does it really fit in with the tone of the comprehensive plan, which is a good tone, it's in the spirit of what I think people really want to see? So one, I would say, and maybe, maybe when it started to be written, this whole day, leisure solar hadn't even started. So maybe that's why it wasn't prominent at the time. So maybe that's why it wasn't prominent at the time. But one, let's do the analysis, let's look at the trends, let's know what we're looking at. So that we are actually making projections in the plan that relate to solar. And two, let's make sure we're not damaging existing jobs.
Anybody else on the comprehensive plan?
Can I, can I ask a quick question? So Jessica, you were saying that there. They are hiring, hiring analysis to be done. Who is, well, they.
No, I mean, I mean, the county hired this, this man's company to write the plan, right? And there's a lot of. Trends already in there and analysis done. So why not ask for a bit more on it based on the, the trends of solar. How many are being requested? Thanks for that.
Hey. Anybody else want to talk about the comprehensive plan?
My name's Al Mears. I've lived here in this county all my life. Been ten months school together, graduated together, living all my life. Um. Just to kind of summarize all this up, I think what all of you heard tonight. You got a hundred, a hundred million people that showed up here. A lot of them, like me, didn't even realize that a lot of this was going on until just recently. I heard about some of it last summer a little bit. Um, didn't get involved, probably shut up, didn't get to any meetings. But you got a lot of people here that's asking you guys. To take your time and not digress into this. Maybe do some more looking, some more studies, listen to what everybody's saying, what they're asking. And. Cause a lot of people's looking at this as. Some of the commissioners. Are doing things that maybe they shouldn't. They've had their hands where they shouldn't be. And they're helping. A handful of people or families that's gonna get rich off of this, where the rest of the people here in the county. Are gonna have to deal with consequences, whatever those are down there. And there's a lot of consequences that can come from this and a lot of different things. I know you got people that's doing studies and writing all these things. And that anybody can go on and do their own research. And see that it's really not all that great of a thing overall. If we didn't have all these trillions of dollars. That's coming from the government right now to pay for all this, none of this would be happening. Or very little. Cause most of these companies are being paid for by government money, which are our taxes. And a lot of people's against that. They don't want that. So I would just ask that you listen to what everybody said here tonight. You know. And maybe take some time to think about it before you make a complete decision. Because you got a lot of people that's just getting involved. Like you said, you got the list, went from two hundred to a thousand. And I know myself, people that I've talked to, more people's getting interested, wanting to know more about it. Wanting to learn about it and want to get involved in their. Ninety-nine percent of them that I know are against it. So that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd like to.
Okay. Make your way to the front, please.
Jenny, you got a window that you popped there on a. Somebody that puts a. Planning to put a plate on a. Yes.
Go ahead with your name.
My name is Andrea Campbell Ingram.
Okay.
I've lived in Fountain County almost my entire life. The gentleman that stood up and said that his farm had been condemned today is my dad. Now, don't worry. This is a rhetorical question, so you don't have to answer. But if nothing is being condemned. Then why was my dad notified, or excuse me, per through the red flag? That his ground had been condemned? Explain that to me. I think it was, you know, the ERAs that I'm, I'm sure, but. Let me tell you, I have a bachelor's degree in agriculture from Purdue University. Rule number one in agriculture. Sir. Are you the gentleman from the solar company? Okay, do you have someone here who knows? Okay. Well, let me tell you.
I'm the county's attorney.
Rule number one of learning. Is to be a steward of the land. The people that are here. Are my friends. My family. My colleagues. Every single one of them has worked for what they have. Will put in the ground what they think of it every single year. Agriculture is a backbone. Of this economy. And of the US. I want you to think about that tonight when you're a kid. And you have to think about all the decisions you made. You should think, you think about whether you really made the best decision for our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone?
Yep. Brother Holmes. Um, I was just upstairs and I was listening, I agree with all this stuff, but the one thing, I heard it out there a little bit. You see all these kids in their FBA jackets. How are they gonna go in twenty years? If you take half the farm, and I just think we need to slow down, like everyone else said. Take a look. These kids, there's no way they're getting into farming if they want to. You take up, and this plan is already expensive, but you take that question around. They just don't have a chance. So. Just, I appreciate you. Just take your time and it'll be planned. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Dave Jaquay. I wanna just say a few things that I've observed over tonight and the last meeting of that. Not only there are a thousand petition, a thousand signature petition there, there's also another five hundred on change order. Do you want to dismiss those as casually as you did the last ones? I hope not. Your response, if I can quote correctly, was vote me out in two years. And that's completely inappropriate. And I would hope for a measure of decorum from you going forward. The second thing I'd like to point out tonight. I've heard a lot of questions. And there's not been much evidence either way. But there's a lot of people asking questions. Where's the money going? And I don't mean from federal to solar. I mean to follow up on what this man over here mentioned. What family is getting rich? Where are their conflicts of interest? I feel that as a public service. Everybody involved in this decision should clear their name completely and make sure there is no doubt. That we aren't selling things to solar, that we aren't giving money because we are invested in solar. I feel like that would be an appropriate thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? While the public hearing. Okay, if there's no one else, we will close the public hearing for the comprehensive plan. Jimmy, if you want to say something?
Yeah, you're closing it.
Just to, just to comment. Just do it on my麦. Yeah. Six thirty-seven public hearing. On plan or the public comment on plan closed. Okay, by information, hopefully for discussion. On. What to do next as far as whether the. Revisit this and commissioners.
Yeah, I'll speak to the issue of a comprehensive plan in the context of plan is zoning should focus on land use to the infrastructure. While I was planning to issue chairman in two thousand six, seven, eight time period, we constructed a comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance to address. Uh, landfill issue. Now, we verbally couldn't say we're constructing this to zone out the land used. A. Land.
Landfill.
What I say, landfill, okay. There is no mention in this comprehensive plan of addressing landfill, which we worked hard to address in that time period. Uh, there's no mention, uh, addressing wind here or solar. And I would like to see those three issues addressed. Uh, to our suppliers. As we go forward.
Any others?
Based on Jim's comment and the overwhelming comments that we have heard tonight, I am not prepared to vote on this tonight. I think we need to. Sit down and break this down more, do a lot more work on it because I don't think I've missed a meeting in several months and. We, we've gotten it via email, but we haven't gotten to sit down with it in front of us and have a discussion, all of us. And so I'm not prepared to vote on anything tonight.
Cause I don't feel comfortable moving forward. I think we need to respect our citizens of Fountain County. And really listen to the heartfelt of our county and do what's best for our county. I come up and I'm. I, I personally don't want to see what my parents worked for for years to ever go into solar. I would like to see it as, like a lot of the people here in the county. And I feel we really need to take all the information all of our citizens have given to us tonight and really think about it before we. Jump to, jump into something too fast.
Uh, I'll agree with those sentiments as well. I think some time is needed to make sure we approach. Not just solar, but the entire plan. A bit. More thoughtfully and ensure that it's what's best for Fountain County. And I've been listening to these comments too. Um, I think. I think nobody's, there's no harm in taking time to make sure that it's, that it's approached the right way. Um, I've been all through the company and some plan. I think there's a lot of really good content in there. I think some of it needs revisited. Um, I know Cam has put a lot of hard work into that as well. Yeah. Less than the plan. But yeah, I think we need to. Be more careful.
Ken, do we need an official motion to table that?
Yeah, particularly if somebody makes a motion to the table and there's a second, then that has to be voted on.
Okay, for that motion, do we have, do we have to set a timeframe? Like do we set? Can we discuss a timeframe as a group link? Do we think is a month, a month is enough to review it? Do we? Do we think we can look at it in June or July? What, what do you guys think?
I think that's, that's all that, up to you. I mean, you can, you can table it and have it. The only, the only issue is if, would be if you wanna. Table to vote. To the next meeting so that you potentially wouldn't have to notice another public hearing. Um.
Can you explain that more, Jessica?
Yeah, if, and I was just looking at the statute, ordinarily, if you have a, a public hearing and, um. That if it's, if it's continued in, or if you have, if you have something that requires a public hearing before you take action. Um, I did, I can't tell from the statute or even reported cases. That. I don't know if there's any benefit now to, um, continuing it that way. So I, I think you just have discretion on. You can continue, you can table it to the next meeting, after next meeting. Then you can decide if it's in, in a, in a form. Cause if there are gonna be revisions to it, then we would have to have another public hearing. So I think you have discretion on. And the easiest is probably just continuing. I'm sorry, not continuing, tabling it to the next meeting. Um, and then if, if it's in a, in a form then that you want to have a vote on. To then send it to commissioners, then at that point you would direct, you'd have to come back for a public hearing. So if it's gonna be changed, we don't have a public hearing anyway.
Or alternate.
It's monthly, the fourth Thursday of the month.
Do you want to take questions?
Well.
My question.
Cars don't just afford to talk me right now. So I'm. I should play, I mean, Cam, Emily?
He can answer.
Okay.
Well, my question is, if you're gonna table this thing for the next meeting or whatever. It ought to be proposed that they freeze the contracts. And not bring a bunch more in petitions and be signed. To add more ground to it.
That's on the agenda for, that's a separate issue. I understand what you're saying completely, but that's, this is just on whether they, the complaint commission is gonna vote on the comprehensive plan that's been drafted and proposed. And then, so it's, those are separate issues.
Ken.
Sorry, go ahead, Roger.
Ken, I, it's his turn. What, what Jamie started with is we can table this so we can have a discussion internally. This will. Um, I think one month is not gonna be enough because next month they're gonna sit down and talk about it. They're gonna come up with a plan to give to these gentlemen so he can proceed with the text or whatever. I just don't want, you know, us to say, oh, next meeting we'll have it figured out. There's, there's just a process that's gonna be.
And I, I don't want them rushing at all. So it doesn't cause any harm in planning on. So can we do like three months or something? That way it gives everybody time to look over it, to go through it. If we have questions, we can ask more. And as we said, internally, we can all talk and discuss a lot more.
Hasn't everybody read that?
I'll say.
Yes, but, but yes. But really like thoroughly go through a little bit more and. Especially in light of some of the things that we've heard tonight. I would like to look at it. Yes, I've looked at it, but I would like to look at it again in light of some of the comments we have heard tonight.
Can I, I'm okay. I've been trying to read through it again. Okay, and it keeps talking about the zoning administrator. Okay, who is that? Okay, are you living in this county?
Uh, no, I'm from Montgomery County.
Okay.
So hold on, hold on. If you ask me a question, let me answer it, please. I literally think I accomplished, I'm a contract.
He is an outside third party contractor who is. Our zoning administrator. If you guys don't understand what I'm saying there, that's a problem. We have somebody from outside areas. Telling us what we're gonna do. That's not correct. We can't have that. He's a third party outside contractor as a zoning.
We have a certified engineer contractor to look out for our best interests.
He's looking out for your best interest. He's not looking out for our best interest.
Sir, excuse me. First of all, if you've been to the previous meeting, you will know that I stick my mind to, and I do what's best for the county. That the administrator, uh, right, it used to be Amber Rourke. And I was her support. Amber just resigned a week ago, what have you. So I'm just helping continue the process until another administrator comes in place. I do not want my name to be dragged into this in a good way. I do my job. I'm hired to do a job. I do my job to support this county. That's, that's the bottom line of it.
When is another administrator being brought in?
You can have to be focused.
I am. Okay, okay.
So for the record, Roger makes recommendations. And then we can agree with him, we can disagree with him, but he is just making recommendations based on his professional opinion as a licensed engineer.
And Campbell has been going, Campbell White just started on this board. Month or two ago. And he, and Mark, and Mark are new members. Campbell has been going through everything. The last session. Our last regular meeting, we went through about half of the ordinance. And that's what we're trying to do the rest of tonight possibly. Roger in no way, shape or form does anything to give us information. This board decides what happens. So we are very fortunate to have someone of his caliber representing this town.
So could you answer my question? I asked, he said he was back as an administrator until another could be brought in. When is another being brought in?
Uh, as soon as we can find somebody to do it.
Are you actively looking?
Yeah, I mean, I. I've searched basically. The two offices generally. He wants to do it in courthouse, don't want to do it. It'll take someone with knowledge of this equipment and someone willing to do it. I mean, right now, honestly, not a lot of people want to step up and take this. I mean, you know, the whole stuff's going on.
Well, because they don't want to be brought up.
Right, I get it. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, okay, we're back to the board.
You, you guys, if you can have a motion, you can motion to table it to the June meeting or the July meeting. It's, it's just that.
You want to speak to one issue before you do that? Mrs. Wallner had an issue with her work section in the comprehensive plan. I would like to see that section probably taken out, please. Then the air force section right here, she had a concern with.
I think that was a draft, yeah. I think, I think.
Not Mike, not Mike.
What's, what's the date on that?
February twenty twenty four. So if, if you would.
John, I'll check that. I probably addressed it.
You, you thought.
I think she was okay with it after John switched, switched the language on it.
Yeah, I switched languages on it, re-sent it in. I'll look check. Can I take that back with me? I'll look check.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure her issues are addressed.
I thought she looked at it and said, okay.
Yeah.
Are you talking about me? Dana?
No, no.
John Dollar.
Okay. That's fine.
I remember talking with her. Okay, so do we have a motion to table it on the comprehensive plan on the field in July or about soon? Whenever you want to.
I, I, I think the proper motion would be to table it until the commission determines that it's in a, a final revised form. That then, you know, so that way it doesn't have to keep going on your agenda. So just.
And then we can hold the public, we can set a public meeting when we feel like it's ready.
Correct.
Okay, I made a motion that we table, um, voting on the, um, comprehensive plan this evening. Um, and I would like to see agenda items for our next several meetings uh, to sit down, go through it, have it up on the screen, and go through it and address everyone's comments. I said.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose, the same.
I'm thinking.
Oppose, yeah. So one, two, three, four, two, five, I pulled, sort of, okay, so one, two, three, five, five. Motion carries.
How many names were there? I'm sorry.
Three. I asked the name, a lot of other people that may not know, once you guys come, come to another decision, where does all that information get put out where everybody else can get to and see it?
In in the, the draft document itself, which is I think on the county website right now, the last, one of the last pages discusses implementation, that lays out all the, all the statutes. So once it gets revised, then, um, once it's ready to be back for the public hearing phase where we were tonight, it'll have to be put again on the cap, the revised version will be put on the public website. And notice a public hearing will be published in the local counties' broadcast newspaper, which is the, I'm coming in.
How long do you table for? You gotta make sense here.
Didn't, it goes revised until the board makes another determination that's ready to have another public hearing. That may take two months, it may take six months.
How do we know that you guys aren't going to do anything under the table between now and then? What, what gives us that trust issue? I guess, how do we know that for a fact?
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Senator. Okay. So, Jim, I'm not totally close to your plan commission. We're just going to ignore that comment.
It's still, where's the transparency is the question? I think the public has a right to know.
See, you guys could be making a bunch of money under the table during this whole time we say we're going to have a meeting in July. Everybody upstairs having a hard time listening. But you need to, you need to assure us while you're in this position, before election doesn't matter that stuff. What we're wondering, you guys are going to keep your word to that point because you could change everything by then and we wouldn't have to put the stand on when it does come time for us to set forth do what we need to do what's right for us as Fountain County.
Thank you, this doesn't apply. Okay.
Your question will all be addressed here just in a few minutes. Okay.
I have a question. There were three names. I would like to know why they voted no, no.
Yeah.
Who were the names?
I was one of the names.
I was too. Maybe you're a lot asking.
Yes. Okay, now, so this part or just going to, it's, it's all. Fine, okay, okay. Um, Jim, if you would like to talk.
Where you're at? Sure. I think as you all know, there are several solar companies, what I would call targeting, accounting, or site of solar parks during the county. I have certain of that as, as many of you do, you see. And I'm going to make a motion. Uh, I'm not going to use the word moratorium. I'm going to use the word suspend, but it means one of the same thing. You kind of want to look into their share a little bit. Can you say that pretty close?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, I'm going to make a motion and I'll read it. We can talk about it. My motion is based on the rapid expansion of commercial solar energy systems, I move to amend Fountain County zoning ordinance last amended nineteen July twenty twenty one, Article nine, solar energy systems and facilities to suspend Article nine and in iteration thereof for the period of one year as it applies to commercial solar energy, energy systems and facilities to allow time for additional evaluation and study of commercial solar energy systems, transparency and dialogue with Fountain County citizens. Excuse me, and for the purpose of constructing new revised solar. I also move to amend Fountain County zoning ordinance Article nine, sections nine point oh six, nine point oh seven, and nine point one six to remove sections nine point oh six, nine point oh seven, and nine point one six. I'm not going here. The purpose of this removal is to eliminate any ambiguity should a commercial solar energy system submit a permit application during the order suspension and to assure any new revised language be applied to such ordinance. I also move that Fountain County Advisory Plan Commission pull a public hearing on these proposed changes and recommend the proposed change ordinance to the Fountain County Commissioners for their approval.
So in, in proposing this text amendment, it's just, it's a matter of have, it would probably be, but today is Thursday, so I, I, if Amber is in here, who knows the, uh, schedule for submission to the if anybody works with Fountain County neighbor, they'll schedule for notice.
My purpose is to get into a public, public hearing.
Friday, Amber's in Friday.
So, but.
Friday?
And so if you didn't, if you didn't, we could get a notice, a public hearing tomorrow for a text amendment, then it could, it runs on Thursdays. So if we got there by Friday, would it run next Thursday?
Yeah.
It should, but you never know.
Yeah. It, so then, um, it would, you could have, unless you have a meeting, it's ten days from the date that the Fountain County neighbor can get that published. So, anybody have a calendar?
Oh, good. Can I say, I've got a motion on the floor.
No, I'm.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, wait till that passes.
Could I, could I get a second on the motion?
Jim.
Good, we.
I want to make one comment.
Okay, absolutely. And if you want to amend the motion, I.
First of all, and I'm not sure I am right on this, and I'll have to refer to Ken, but, um, to reach your goal, I question whether amending the language and removing it is what you want. I actually think what you're wanting is a moratorium because if you remove it, then there is zero zoning on it and it may actually have a positive impact.
I think, I just, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that the language, the, uh, nine point oh six, nine point oh seven, nine point one six is really the offending language in this ordinance. I just wanted to make sure that was understood.
You mean, I, I don't think, I don't think the, the motion, the motion itself is really just a motion for a text amendment.
That's, that's right.
Because it, and it has to be drafted and it'll just have to be.
Absolutely.
Um.
My purpose is getting to a public hearing so that we can revise and take a look at my motion and, uh, for the Plan Commission to construct a proposal to, uh.
Well, so right now the Plan Commission, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll wait for the procedure motion.
In, in the text amendment, can we say that we are not accepting Capricate? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I, I just wanted to go to the extreme to make sure that that was understood until another one to be accepting any permit applications. Yeah.
Say that again. I, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. Say, say, say that again, what you just said.
I, I just want to make sure that during the suspension or you might call a moratorium, then no solar ordinance company would submit a permit. And if, if they submit a permit, if we don't, if we don't state that we're not going to receive a permit and or if we don't state, we eliminate three sections here, I'm afraid. They might be grandfathered in for some reason. I'm going to the extreme and citing nine point oh six, oh seven, and sixteen.
And my intention. In fact, it needs to be a moratorium.
Yes, yeah. My intention is getting to a public hearing so we can more clearly and clearly write a write a document and submit it to the Commissioners for what everyone here would call a moratorium.
Yeah, but I'm getting, I'm getting Ken's point though. There would be, there is some inherent risk of the.
Oh, I understand.
I think it's.
I, I totally.
Their lawyers are showing it. Well, it's written here that we are.
I was given a shotgun.
No, no, no. I think, no, well, I, I just, I, I get Ken's point, but I still.
I agree, I agree. It can, it can be risky in relation to saying no, uh, permits will be accepted.
That makes a part of the motion. I just want to make sure that it has a.
It has an effect. It has the effect that I wanted to know, permits would be considered before consent.
We need an amendment to Jim's motion.
Yeah.
That we won't be accepting.
I guess you're an expert. There was, there was, I didn't, I couldn't keep my, uh, right fast enough on your first motion. Um, you want to restate the motion, see if there's a second?
Uh, yeah.
I think it's sufficient to make a motion for a text amendment to address.
So for the official motion, does it need all that wording or is it just Jim is making a motion that we make a text amendment to the current ordinance as of twenty twenty? How is that?
Yeah.
In legalese, how do we do that?
I think he is, he can state the motion as he's drafted. There can be a second on that. I don't think you're, you're bound by uh, seconding that motion. And what it, it's going to be, he's making a motion for a text amendment and it's going to have to be drafted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Can I ask a question? My name's Sally Carlson. I just want to know exactly what Jim has wanted done because after everybody talked, we're all just confused. Are we suspending moratorium and for what, what's happening?
And when would that, they would.
And yeah, and when would it take place?
It would not take place until after the, the first commissioners meeting. The, the commissioners would vote on it at their first meeting after the Plan Commission would have a public hearing and on whatever date that is in May.
But that's just to amend the ordinance. So there would need to be a moratorium if you wanted this suspension to start now. Otherwise, this suspension wouldn't start until the tax amendment would go to the.
Plan Commission is, is advisory, we're not area. It wouldn't, since this is the, in my opinion, this text amendment is the only viable way to, to do a moratorium. And the way Mr. McKee has proposed it is, is the proper proceeding.
Anybody that applies between now and the public hearing would still be grandfathered in under the current language unless.
It's not, it's just, yeah.
But this is a step in the right direction in getting some time to get some, look at it.
Granted, rutting all that. So we're just doing a text amendment to nine point oh six, nine point oh seven, and nine point one six?
I think, I think the, the text amendment to the solar ordinance is to, um, to suspend, um.
Even trying to say suspend or a moratorium on.
Suspend.
I guess we need a clarification on the works already on the suspension.
Right, right. But I think Campbell's saying that in legalese, that it's not.
Oh, yeah. Let, let, let me, let me.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, let, let me put it this way. Here, I, I just looked up the, the sections you're talking about taking out. All you're doing is talking about taking out the sections that talk about permitting.
Yes.
But you're still allowing solar. And basically, I think your intent, your actual effect is going to be to make it easier for solar.
Okay.
I think to achieve what it is you want to do, and what I think several want to do is we can, we can, uh, I am going to have to refer to Ken on this, but I think it would be a motion to amend the text and basically we're going to kill the current, we would advise to kill the current solar ordinance altogether. Replace it.
Yeah.
And replace it with a moratorium. I think what you're talking about doing will have a potential to be opposite of the end of the fact.
What is your recommendation, Tim?
I think we should to achieve what you're talking about, I think it should be to amend the text, but replace it with a moratorium.
Okay.
And basically the entire ordinance is gone. And then at that point, it would do it. Otherwise, I think there would be satisfactory, the, the, the danger of unintended consequences. It's just my opinion.
Yeah, well, to praise all of everyone. When it comes to the solar.
That, that's the, that's the intention.
Is there no way, we, uh, is there no way, there is no way to stop this, to put the moratorium right now? Okay, so we've sent a red flag up to all the solar companies that they need to get their permit in the next ten days.
Yeah, yeah. We would, we would, by condition we would have to have a public hearing and draft a resolution to the Commissioners for their approval. The final decision would be.
You understand, right? That it's a, it's a form of checks and balances so that one governing body couldn't, you know, say that we want everyone to wear red and jump on pogo sticks on Thursdays. That kind of thing. And it's but you, you see where I'm going? That it's, it's so that one body's going to make all the decision. Am I understanding that right, Ken?
No, no, no. All, all due to here right now, I'll shoot us a copy of the one.
All zoning is, they're like, um, just explained. The Plan Commission is, has an advisory role in preparing and advising. And then the Commissioners are the ultimate legislative body. Works in conjunction.
Hey, Ken, I have, I have a question for you. Just because of my history involved, you have twenty years on federal work. When a local government spends something, the referral is to go one, one higher. So you go to the state and the state doesn't have anything, then you go to. The referral is to go one, one higher, so you go to the state, and the state doesn't have anything, but you go to federal. When we suspend this ordinance, I'm, I'm really worried that it's gonna backfire and hurt us more, because now we have no ordinance whatsoever. And then it affords the general state ordinance.
Yeah, I knew when the worst was spent, Spencer County, I took it there.
I just wanna make sure, whatever you guys are deciding, decide the correct thing you wanna do, otherwise, we're gonna. Get caught, and we're, we're like, we're in a circle, we don't know how to stop that circle, we need. We need legal guidance to tell you what you need to do.
I just try to use this as an example, like Spencer County, several other counties, uh, full of law morities just to kind of draft this.
He's right, if you don't replace the removed ordinance with a moratorium, then you would go to the default state standard that was passed.
I.
Uh, it's just a voluntary standard.
Like the twenty twenty two legislation?
And it's statute of just voluntary.
Well, in the title, it's an default solar standard, it's voluntary.
Or coming to a moratorium, there are right next to us, there's been several people counting that have done moratoriums with successful reasons. Thinking and learning more, planning, so I, I don't think I have all the things.
I would, I mean, language change, but I think it will stand by.
If, if anybody, unless anybody wants to amend it, there's a motion, of course, if there's a second, then you can mount on that.
I have a question, Kelly Carlson, can we just suspend any permitting right now until we get this figured out? Because this is a mess, this is a nightmare. I sit on the council, and I, I am not comfortable with how this ordinance is written, I don't like how the process that it is written, I don't like how the, the people that were used to write it. Because um I think it needs to be fixed, and I don't know what it's gonna take to get it fixed, but we need to do the right thing and fix it, so it's right from that point forward.
Hi, Karen, since the way you guys didn't bring it to our attention before we got this far, where we had to have thousands of petitions, thousands of signatures. Hundreds of people congregated here watching on screen, in order for you guys to tell us. Kind of better found, Kevin, you should have asked all of us before me, you should have had this meeting, and said, hey, we're considering solar, guys. Here's our ups, here's our downs, why couldn't we just go ahead and consider, let's have a meeting about it, just to leave a picture about it. But instead, we're in this meeting, you've already settled, you've already proven some people, you've already brought some big companies in, and now we're stuck in the middle of this big mess we don't want. Did you guys could have stopped at the beginning? Can you answer, is that a question?
Is this your first meeting?
Pretty much.
Well, I wanna ask for a point of order, so that Plan Commission can assess this business, please, sorry.
They've been sending and asking for change for a year. A year.
If there's no other way in this newspaper to make this an app, there are lots of people here already, so.
Except to follow the state statute.
And so it has to be in a newspaper, not an online newspaper?
Have to be in the neighbor.
Take a picture of the newspaper, post it.
Okay, we can move on to this, Ken, so we can do this, Lee.
I would like to make an amendment to Jim's motion, I would like to, instead of the word suspend, I would like to include moratorium. For Article Nine. And for especially section nine point oh six, nine point oh seven, and nine point one six. So that we are not accepting applications.
Seven, four, you're saying for a year?
What was your intent, what was your intent for the time span of that?
Year, year, one year, yes, I'm sorry. I wanted to clarify it.
Okay. Right, so that's my amendment to the motion, is Campbell, in legalese, that, does that cover it?
I'm not answering that, I just, I just didn't wanna go down the wrong path, sure, do watch Jim's intent was, and I felt like that, so. County has an attorney for a region.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Does that cover us, Ken?
And does that like suspend permits to be drawn in, that it would give us?
But it's, it's, it's really a motion for a text amendment to Article Nine, that, that has to be drafted and, and ready by the time you have the, the public hearing.
But a public hearing, we, we can choose to amend what's presented at that time also, so I mean, so this is a final.
Yeah, well, you don't have to decide what it says, you don't have to decide right.
If I may make stronger, you know, my attempt is to get to a public hearing, get discussion in a public hearing, get a vote in a public hearing, and pass this on to commissioners for their action.
Just to make sure I know where we're at in the meeting, you, you had put forth a motion, that I don't believe was fully.
Seconded.
Seconded, and then another motion had been forced, I was getting it back up.
Oh, yeah, amended, I amended his one, do we need a second before I make my?
You, you can, your motion is now a person, you can say, second to her motion has amended.
Okay.
Got it. Those motions have been, okay.
All in favor, so if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Suppose, say. Well, I'm sorry, I was looking this way, for, okay. Motion care.
Now. About as far as scheduling the public hearing. We're, we're already regularly scheduled to come back on the twenty third. Which means. That would give us until. Isn't that right, that would be the fourth Thursday of May.
I'm just saying, procedure, you know, procedurally, it's not very good without.
We're not going to direct having a public hearing, at least we're trying to. Trying to have a special meeting.
Hey, hey, guys.
Can you please confirm with the, with the number here, how many doors are remaining?
It was unanimous.
Do you want to issue for the public hearing on, on the, the next regular scheduled meeting, or do you wanna try to have it faster? If you had it on the twenty third, then the, the next commissioner's meeting would be June third. To try, to try to have it, it would be. So if a public hearing notice was submitted tomorrow, if things went right, for Fountain County neighbor, and not disparaging them at all, it's just, I know it's hard to, for them to get. Requested, but it's, then that would be published on May second. Then you would have. You could, the earliest you could have. Uh, the public hearing would be May thirteenth, you have Monday, Monday evening. And then if you have, if you have a public hearing the week of the thirteenth, then it goes to the commissioners in there, May twentieth. So is it, you know, you want to direct to have, try to have a special meeting the week of the thirteenth? As long as we can meet the publication deadlines, or do you wanna just target the twenty third of eight, which is already noticed?
I say, we can do it the day of the thirteenth, because we got that, we got the commissioners on the twenty third.
Then it's back.
For a commission, commissioners on the twentieth, you should try to do it the week of the thirteenth, okay, that's, that is whatever. And yeah, and I, I can make error, and then there. Man, I'm around the. We'll try for the week, we'll try for the week of the thirteenth, everybody's.
There's a.
Up for that, yeah.
Census, so the night, the night that we.
We originally said Monday, it was the thirteenth, how do you guys live on the thirteenth, I gotta make it. Tuesday, but I can make mine. Yeah, thirteen, thirteen, good. You guys are right, we said thirteen, six, pardon, yeah.
We, I had sent out everybody on the over.
We, so we're gonna have a special meeting, you need to have a motion and a vote on that.
Yeah, just wanna make sure I have the date right, we're saying the thirteenth, can't you do this?
Are you available, thirteen?
I, or, one of my partners can be here that night, that's a city apartment, council, I, but we'll, 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 we'll.
What about ten?
It's not available, fourteen.
After turn the four, ten. I, I think it would be better when Kent has the history, I don't know your other guys, or somebody, you know that history and everything, that'd be better, have you where. Paul, Jim, works for everyone.
I can't do fourteen.
You'd be here in spirit.
Just the majority can be here.
Okay, so fourteen to sixteen, two, is that what we're talking?
Yeah.
What did I say, fourteen, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, you said we need.
We have motion for that, yeah.
Yeah, the motion, motion to for a special meeting on May fourteenth and sixteenth.
Question, is this a public hearing or a special meeting?
No, no, this is a special meeting to have the public hearing.
I'll make a motion for a special meeting on May fourteenth, I'll say it.
All in favor, so if I can say aye. I suppose. Motion care.
I have a question. Um, Deborah Morant, is there a location that the next public meeting could be held at, that could accommodate the number of interested persons that would like to attend? So that they have a better ability to hear what is going on, and has been a struggle, right?
Yeah, the reason that's been was kept here is because if you put in the face of a comprehension plan prior to any of this coming up. So yes, we can, we can, yeah, figure something out.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah. I don't know that we've, well, seconded to talk to Brad Keller, I guess, but we don't know, I don't think we have any.
You have, you're.
Yeah, okay, back to the. Fourteenth, we're gonna draft text. For a resolution presented to the commissioners, is that what?
It, it's gonna need to be drafted before that, that'll, that's gonna be what's presented at the meeting on the fourteenth, yeah. The, the text.
So the text might be, just warn everybody, might be different, they might be.
That's right. Yeah, well, you don't have to, you're just proposing a text amendment, you don't have to write it in a motion.
Hey, Ken?
Yes.
So tonight, while we go through. Our comments, am I gonna get direction on how the rewrite is gonna look like, so I can come back to you guys, would anything for the, for me?
I, I think. That we've been, and Mr. McKee was explaining. Other counties that have recently followed this process, I think are gonna give a pretty good template.
My stuff, aren't you? Yeah, because, I mean, Campbell had a bunch of comments, a bunch of comments, you know, Jim.
Uh, the, this motion for the text amendment is, is separate from the ongoing discussion we've had on the other aspects of the. The ordinance, this can be, this, it's, this is, we'll be on a separate track.
Darling, do you like to speak now, or if I don't? Whatever.
I know we have public comment on the agenda, and I know we have a public comment for the, uh, the. Comprehensive plan, but didn't, have we had? Sorry, have we had a public comment for a regular APC meeting yet?
Yeah, I.
I think we've just taken some.
I, I gotta, I gotta look for you and say it's gonna be a problem.
Okay, we'll let you say, you know, the fee will fall, and then the meeting's over.
Wait, so everybody's got a copy of this, Jim had asked me, and I'm Dudley Curry, I'm president of the county council. And Jim had asked me to come and give you a little bit of, of history of our finances. Uh, he's had people say, well, we've heard the council's setting on enough money to run the government for three years without any. Tax money coming in, and that's absolutely not true, and I've been coming to, I've been to four of the. Plan commission meetings, and I know we have two new ones here, but the council has, has asked for you to recommend to the commissioners. That our fees get increased, we need to be in line with other counties throughout the states with those finances. And I know um some cities and towns have no solicitors without a permit, and I don't know if that, that, that's up to legal counsel, if you can do this, but. We should have the, the solar companies need to get a permit before they can talk to any landlord. And that fee ought to be ten or twenty thousand dollars, not five hundred dollars. And that would help with our finances. And I was at a plan commission meeting where a gentleman stood up and said he was embarrassed that we were setting on thirty four million dollars. And not spending it, so as you can see by this form, yes, in fact, on January first. We had thirty five million dollars in our fund. As of last Friday, it's down to thirty four million dollars. And a lot of those funds, as you can see, are only available for special purposes. So Community Corrections, we're holding one point three million dollars of their, their money because of the way it needs to be audited by the state. We don't have any control over that money, that's uh for them to spend. Our Fountain County Court has one point four million dollars, and that is grants for J-Rac, or CASA. For the third probation officer, for drug testing probation um. Uh, people, so, and we have no control over that, but. Grain agent surveyor, there's five hundred fifty nine thousand dollars in the bank. Then we have our lit special purpose, it has six point two billion dollars in there. The only thing that can be spent on is for the bonds for our new jail. Or if we need to replace something in the building, it cannot be used for any operation of our sheriff's department. And then the sheriff's department has a hundred and forty thousand, which is for uh. Things that are set by the state that we also do not have any control, so that leaves us with twenty five million dollars to work with. And this year's budget is twenty million dollars. And we've already had additionals in the first four months of one point four million. So we're, we're talking in twenty one point four million, and that twenty five is what'd be spent. And below, you can see the accounts that we are in control of, there's ten accounts, our county general. And you can see, I forgot the balance that it was on January first, what our estimated income. Our budget for this year, and what our balance will be on December thirty first, and. Last year, we had a great year, took in ninety million dollars in county general. And last year, we had a great year, took in ninety million dollars in county general. But I have to go by the average over the last five years, so that's why I, I put our estimated income for this year is eight million, because we don't know what's, what our income's gonna be, we don't know how many of our citizens are affected by Quaker Oaks uh, being closed, because then they're not gonna be paying income tax to the state, which is where part of our money comes for the, the county general fund. Uh, see that, you can see, uh, our queue capital development, uh, health department, and I've got an asterisk by that, health department, there's two million dollars in that account. But we only have control of one million of it, one million is grants from the state that they can only spend on certain things in our, our county. Uh, county farm, those that do not know, our, our income from the county farm, we set up that fund years ago when the, uh, county farm was sold, and we receive income from the, uh, farming of that land, which is only forty-eight thousand dollars a year. And we try to buy a couple of new vehicles every year for our sheriff's department, uh, nine-one-one. Uh, you can see the asterisk on that, our estimated income's three hundred sixty-eight thousand, um, Warren County in the past paid one-third of those expenses, and the county paid two-thirds. Uh, last year, that agreement was, uh, dissolved, and there was a flat rate fee paid, and that comes up in May, and I don't know what they're gonna be paying for us next year, that is between the commissioners of Fountain County and Warren County. We have a public safety fund, we have a riverboat fund. Riverboat, we don't have a riverboat in Fountain County, but, uh, part of the agreement to get riverboats in Indiana, some of the profits is shared to the counties who do not have one, it's only forty-three thousand dollars, but it does help to buy, uh, something for the ambulance, then go for an ambulance, because those are three hundred fifty thousand dollars every time you have to buy an ambulance. Brady Day Fund, right now it has seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in it. We do not get any income into that fund, and we're really not following the law the way it was written in nineteen ninety-eight. When the commissioners at that time closed their landfill, the state says you've got to set aside one million dollars for any problems with that landfill. We've tried to get that, to keep it at the, the million dollars, the state has not come onto us and said, you know, you don't have the million dollars to pay in the bills every year. Us about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for a land built closed, just because we gotta move dirt. But the state said you guys see each year in, uh, for thirty years, so twenty twenty-eight is the very first time we can do something if the state approves it. And then our highway fund, highway department, we started out here four point five million, you're expected to get about five million. Uh, we budgeted seven, seven million, so our balance is only gonna be two point five million. So if you look at those ten accounts, January first, twenty twenty-five, first time in twelve years that I've been on the council, those funds are gonna have less money than what they did this year, the, the previous year. We've always increased those at least eight or ten of, eight or nine of them, but all ten are gonna be below average. And then we have, uh, the only other fund that we have some control, it's the American Rescue Plan. That was the money the government threw at all the county cities, uh, to try to get the economy going, but they set restrictions on what that money could be spent for, and there's one point eight million in there right now. It's not spent by the end of next year, it goes back to the federal government. If you look at those ten accounts, what our balance should be at the end of the year, and with the approximately three point six million that we're gonna have from the twenty-five million that's in, in there now, we don't have enough money to do our day-by-day operation for next year without some changes. And you know, we just, the expenses of the county are, are sometimes out of control, but a million dollar contract has been signed to begin on a fourteen million dollar courthouse renovation, and a seven million dollar annex renovation has not even been discussed with the council, before that money's going to come from, or even we're going to pay for it. But I'm gonna leave that for another day, because that, we call the special meeting next Thursday night, county council, and we're gonna discuss this, because some actions gotta be taken, we can't afford to do all these projects. And lastly, I just wanna thank you for your service. I know what you get paid, and it doesn't need to cover your gas to come to meetings, but I appreciate you doing that.
And things will address, they change January, it's funny, but. Yeah, hopefully. Okay.
Well, sorry, do you have a comment? My name is Jack, I've been a lifelong resident of Fountain County, worked on, uh, my grandpa and dad's farm from the life. Few things to do is drive for legislation and farm drainage, so I'm bringing up the topic of, do we understand that there's hundreds of thousands of millions of dollars of infrastructure going underneath these solar fields? And what protections are we giving the landowners that are neighboring, that are not a part of it, that are upstream? There are mains throughout this town that are already leased for the solar panels that have twenty-inch cement mains that run underneath them, and they're sixty-two, a hundred years old. They drain three to four hundred acres, if they fail, we drown the priority that we cherish. Okay, so how do we draft protection for those that want to maintain the remains? And if we do cover it on all solar panels, anybody that has land, if they want to make better or higher production in farm drainage, they've lost that access, because now there's no way to go through there. So I mean, not only is it prohibiting possibly my future, but we could be prohibiting any type of maintenance that could be done. I understand if they hit a tile, they'll fix it, that's been the neighbor standard for how many years, right? It's, it's the long-term look, I've already been in these, I can take pictures of them and show you, they're cracked and they're falling apart. So I'm just trying to give awareness of a disaster that could be coming, so thank you, any questions?
Thank you.
Hey. Is there any other public comment before we move on, right, what kind of special meeting? If not, uh, I sent to all of you the farm overlay for Montgomery County. Uh, that's something that we can discuss in the next month or two when we're looking over this.
Can you say, you sent us what, what did you say?
Farm overlay from Montgomery County, it's for the solar.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know our overlay is, but it's received.
Tim had sent an email, Liam, about the, in twenty twenty-two, Montgomery County changed its solar ordinance to im- implement an add overlay that, that it basically would require, um, rezone. Uh, it, it, it's an overlay, the, just for, 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 uh, special zoning district that is allowed under the statute that requires extra, extra process, and it did, and it's the other changes that Montgomery County adopt, adopted. It's a unique approach to control the growth of, uh, uh, solar or housing or whatever you want, and this case would be solar in the add overlay, um, and it would require a re, a rezone, um, across the board. Future solar, so that's, that's a unique, uh, and Montgomery County passed that, and a lot of, uh, counties are, are are looking at that and have requested that, that order.
You can accept a comment?
Sure.
Would you, would you accept a comment on the overlay?
Sure.
Jesse Anderson, again, uh, some of the things that the people involved in activism with solar ordinance change requests um, have held to is that if we had a limit to the solar, or we went ahead and did an analysis of the existing infrastructure, um, at some point, somebody's gonna be told no, either by the limit of what the infrastructure can sustain as far as solar transmission, um, or it could be from the planning and doing the GIS work and getting the overlay footprint done. What I really like about the Montgomery County overlay is once it's passed, then that's sort of the established corridor for where solar is gonna go in. But once they establish an overlay, they say, okay, this is the part of the county that we think is most suitable for solar development, and then that does go ahead and tell some landowners no. And, you know, it is, it is a lucrative thing for landowners, and so that, I'm sure that will be disputed by the other side. But once that overlay is established, then anybody that wants to set up a solar field outside the overlay has to go through the whole process of rezoning their area before they can even submit an application there. Application would only be submitted inside the overlay. So I just think that's a really prudent addition to add an overlay, we have the mapping, I'm sure we know where the infrastructure is, that's something that the people here have been asking for, so just wanna stand up and support that.
Uh, I, I've got the Montgomery County, Montgomery County orders right here, the, the offensive line, we said we had our ordinance just the same, and their ordinance thirteen point oh six, zoning administrator essentially permits the solar farm. Thirteen, thirteen point oh six. You obtain a permit, the government must submit the zoning administrator following, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Within fifteen days, you receive an application for, for a permit, the zoning administrator will determine whether the application is complete, uh, et cetera, and it's, it's essentially, the zoning administrator makes the decision whether. You don't see, you don't read that, you'll be able to read that.
I, 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 I read this many, many, many times, you know, I gave it up, and you were gonna make your votes in. Um, but I, I, I don't think you're reading that, okay, but I. This seems to know, I'll, I'll.
Ultimately, this, ultimately, and it comes back to, after everybody, after goes through process, public hearings, uh, goes through the entire process of the overlay, the rezoning, public hearings. Um, it, this board will make the recommendation, and it ultimately goes to the elected officials to make the decision. It takes the pressure off the non.
So how you read it, Ken?
Yeah, it, it, it is the, the, uh, zoning administrator's job, and that's where, where I read it, it's strictly, I'll say, the fundamental. So they, that person determines whether or not everything has been met, there's a list.
Right, so there's a wide.
Twenty-five things, or whatever it was, but then it would have to flow through the, the zoning, in, in, in that case, the zoning administrator doesn't have any discretion, I mean, except down to the technical stuff, I think this isn't satisfactory, one this improved or whatnot, but once the zoning administrator says, yeah, I think you've met the technical stuff you need for the application, then you start the entire process all the way through, so, so it is not a one person gets to decide situation, just wanna make sure we know somebody.
Yeah, so that is exactly right. And I, I just wanted to clear something up too, a little earlier, when we were talking about a zoning administrator and an administrator of records. The administrator of records is the person who sits up here with Kent's head and keeps all the notes and things, that's what we're looking for, we are not looking for uh, and Roger is our zoning administrator, and he's just like, again, a certified engineer, you're very lucky to have, probably not many counties that are fortunate enough to have a certified engineer as their.
Yeah, just, I just for the, I'm not, I'm not using the process that you just read. The only difference is that it's not going to the commissioners, at this point, I do all technical reviews, I go back to these facilities, and I say, you have a mat, this is something that is. They gotta come back to me and prove that they need it, and we're on the second round of comments, because you still have a mat, this is, this is, that's, I'm not gonna budge on you, because my job is to protect what your rules say, I can't make my own opinion, I cannot make my own rule, I follow what you rules say. That's why I tell a lot of people, you know, they come and be like, well, you're good, no, if you don't like to change the rules, I follow the rules. My job is very simple, I'm a technical person that has the ability to look at rules and follow them. This board has given me over forty comments on some changes, so we're kind of, on the, we're, we're, I'm implementing those comments, they're gonna come back to you once you guys approve them, then you give me the thumbs up. The way the standard is today, after I get the thumbs up, and you're gonna remember everything, then I issue a permit. If it needs to go to the commissioners to vote on it, even better, because I don't wanna take on that, I'd be more than happy for the commissioner to say, Roger, are you ready to give a moment of permit? Then my job is simply administrative, that's how it's to be. The commissioners allow, I'm sorry.
Or the, John, uh, if solar companies looking to get some kind of tax abatement, who matters?
Yes.
Where's that coming?
Um, most solar companies will ask for a ten-year tax abatement, and that is included, uh, and, and most counties give them a ten-year, or a reduced, uh, first year a hundred percent, ninety percent, eighty percent. But, um, the state of Indiana has made it possible for counties, so they'll, so they'll get green energy in their county. They have given them, given them the ability to accept economic development access. So, for instance, Ranger Power, the problem, it's already through, I mean, it's, it's, as far as I know, it's, it's here. So, they would have, they, we have Baker Tilly, uh, CPA firm out of Indianapolis, one of best of the state, and then we have Camp Representatives, Barnes and Thornburg out of Indianapolis, two of our attorneys, they've done more of these, uh, projects than anyone in the state of Indiana. So, what happens is, if, um, we just did this project, and the county council said, okay, uh, we are not given an abatement, and, and, uh, you know, we're not giving you an abatement. So in the case of Ranger Solar, it was about twelve million dollars to go to the state only in ten years. Okay? So of that twelve million dollars, since the state sets a levy on us, they're only gonna send so much of that back, because every year they tell Fountain County how much they're going to get in payments from the state. What the state of Indiana has done is let counties in the solar and wind area. And this is where a lot of questions comes in on the, my land's not worth anything, you're telling me my land is not worth anything. It, it, they declared an economic development area, and in that language, I will admit, it's not clear, it's not, it doesn't make sense, but from what I understand, Sharon's still here. Um, what I understand, what that language is getting at, is that that land is not going to be like Covington or Petersperger added, that it's not gonna add housing or factories onto that land. So therefore, or new core steel's not gonna move in on that land, because there's no sewer or water in that. That's what, it doesn't say that, that's the intent of the law, but not if the land's worthless, because everybody knows it's not. And not that we're saying your land is worthless, but, so to get back to twelve million dollars that went to the state of Indiana, the council would have said no, we would have, I don't know how much that we would have got back, but not, definitely not all of it, I'm not even close to it, it just goes to the state's billion dollars in surplus. If we do the economic development, which the council did on the first farm, and give them a ten-year tax abatement, Ranger Power is writing us a check for seven point eight million dollars that we can. Ranger Power is writing us a check for $7.8 million that we can use to, to pay these bills that others just talked about, to fix these buildings that need fixed. So the first two, Ranger Power and Dolphin up in Attica, who has applied for their permit, will get, this county will receive over $40 million that we can use to fund, fund anything the council commissioners agree.
That pretty much sounds like a bribe to me.
It's the way it is in the state of Indiana.
I got another question too. Out of the county committee. How many of them or members of their family stand to gain from this? In other words, who's putting their land up for solar?
Well, it's a well known fact that Brenda Hardy, the city commissioner, has, they have 78 percent. That was done when she was the county manager. She was not a commissioner. Put it out there on the website that Don Hessler, Craig Stolper, and Tim Schumacher signed that agreement.
Okay, I'll make a statement. I've said it before. I've said it every meeting since the day I started this council three years ago, three plus years ago. I am signed on to GNX Solar. I was informed by GNX Solar that they are not taking my ground. So therefore, I am not benefiting one bit. And until I get a release from GNX Solar, I cannot vote on any abatement or any other ERA conversation for GNX Solar. I want everybody to know it. I've been honest from day one. You can ask anybody in this room.
Okay.
And so was Brenda.
So.
Case you're going to vote on it, if there comes to that.
Brenda did not vote on anything. Crossroads.
That's a question. How's that?
She or she not. And Jessica, you thoroughly, I mean, you've checked it out, but it's probably A and B.
Yeah. When Brenda signed her contract, you said she did this when she was an auditor. What year was that? If you have a.
I don't have the exact year, but it's when she was county auditor.
Okay, so what your records office shows is that she signed her contract in June of 2021. And that's when she's a commissioner. Just that was.
That's why a lot of people's upset.
I thought she was honest.
Oh, come on.
Yeah.
Fair question. So if you have a court for when she's an auditor, maybe that's when she did her promiscuous stuff with Ranger. I don't know, but we'd be, we'd like to see it.
I know Brenda Hardy to be the most honest, most Christian woman. She's not here today because she has taken heat from everybody. And I'm sick of hearing it from the county. We don't have anything in solar. We were offered it. We turned it down. But I believe in the rights of landowners to do what they want with their land.
Including the value of the neighbors' property?
If that's, that's, that's up to you.
Oh, no, no. It's not.
It's been proven, it's been proven that, I, I think certificate of county, the land, the values did not go down.
That's not, that's almost studied.
But that's, okay, I, I've said all I need to say, but I'm, I'm just so aggravated at Fountain County people that it's just.
Amen. Are we?
I'm sick of.
To, to look at that, we went through the minutes, we didn't find any evidence in the minutes of the meeting of a conflict of interest. Our issue was she didn't vote on the Ranger project that she's a part of. But our question was, is it still ethical to vote on like a new solar ordinance when you have solar going in? And I think that's more of an ethical decision than a question of legality. So as far as we could tell, everything is legally in order. But that gray area part is, is the part that I think has people wondering.
Debbie?
I'm just a beginner here. I have not been in on anything. But you just got through saying how much money that you was going to get back from this. But because if you give them zero property tax, one property tax went up 49%. Are you going to guarantee that that so many million isn't going to go to fix this building? Or are you going to guarantee how you're going to spend that? Or are you going to give them zero property tax? And then I'm going to have to pick up the difference. Because I can't do it on a fixed income if you keep raising the prices of property taxes. I think 49% is outrageous.
Right. Okay, let me answer that. Your 49% Southeast Fountain School.
I know that. Fountain Central, Mel Creek, and Attica got hit the hardest.
Yep.
But they're saying that next year is going to be worse because that's not all included in Fountain Central.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, if you, and I, how many acres is, are we talking about in solar right now? I mean, I have no idea.
I'm concerned with this 14,000.
So if you would take 14,000 of our good farmland out of the property tax.
No, 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 no. The land.
I, I thought they was going wanting zero.
Oh, okay, I forgot to explain that. It's actually, the land is not available. The land actually in Ranger Power went up $19.5 million.
But are they paying tax to the family?
Yes, yes.
Have you, have you read the abatement?
Yeah.
Yeah, you write that, that abatement, that I've got permission. It will be available online tomorrow.
What does real property mean, that means property tax?
Real property is, is
Real estate.
Is real estate and personal property is, is all of the, all the improvements.
Right. So raise that abatement because it's not, it's property and personal property tax. I just would say that for 10 years.
It has the solar panels and the fencing and everything that goes around them. The land is not available. Any way, shape, or form, Purdue University has articles on it. It's not a, Larry DeBord has articles on it. Look it up. Not that he's the authority. He's not. He's a professor. I mean, he's a professor, but so then the question, that's rain, Ranger Power, CPA is not the commissioner, not this board, no one else figured this, figured these things, these scenarios up towards. Just in that, in that area, the land went up $19,500,000 because the farmer pays his regular farm taxes that he would have paid. Then the company, because that's moved to commercial, the company pays that farmer the difference from what he would have paid in agriculture to what it costs to have those panels on there. And he's, he's, he pays that, okay? So actually, your taxes in Van Buren and Troy Township is actually, everybody's taxes is going to go down a little bit during the abatement. But once the abatement is off, they go down more. For example, I, I think each farm owner, after the abatement is off, and with Ranger Power in 10 years, it's like $3.30 an acre left, less just because those panels are there, their neighbors have panels, whatever. The one in Attica is much greater per acre. It's well over $12 an acre once the abatement's, and it's, it's four or so when the abaintments are all in an acre. So everybody benefits in the kind, if you're a homeowner in Covington, you're going to benefit from these panels being out here in Troy Township.
The only benefit though is financial. What about the beauty of our county? There's no benefit from that.
Okay, so we have people upset. We have people upset. Yeah, that's, that's kind of our job. Because we have people upset where I go drink coffee, I drink water. Man, I got jumped that first day. Yo, this county raised taxes? No. No, we did not. You're assessed value on your houses because everything around here is selling so much without. And, and something else, but then in Fountain Central School District, it was because they done a $13 million improvement to the school. They're going to put heating in there in both buildings and some other things. So so anyhow, it was Fountain Central School District that, that, that hit Petersburg and the Fountain Central School District hard. Now, that's $13 million. We've got a courthouse here that in, in 2037, 100 years old, that's never had the water lines fixed. It is one day just going to implode. This courthouse needs redone, not by the commissioners, not by the council, by professionals that have looked at it. It has asbestos in it that needs to be removed. There is a ton, yeah, it looks fine. If you look at it, it looks fine. The plumbing company that worked on it has told us they're done. They're not fixing anything else because they're not going to lose their insurance if the line busts and they get sued for, for faulty work. So this, this is a ticking time bomb right here because if the water line busts, they're not, they can't get them fixed, it's shut down. So that, we're just, and this is, this is going to be three or four years down the line before any of this happens. We're just trying, county officials, to, to help keep taxes going outrageous enough. And that's what's going to happen if we don't get some.
And Mr. Monk, we're not saying to say.
Okay, so you shared with all of us how the abaintments were and how that's going to benefit all of us and how many millions of dollars it's going to bring. What's the other side of the coin? What's the other side of the coin of if we give no abaintments, the value of that property, what's it worth and what's the tax dollars that's going to bring in? How is, how is that going to work? And also, the other part of the question is, how are these solar companies depreciating out of their panels?
They're going to.
What's the life of the panels, okay? Because I'm the, I'm the guy that's got a giant solar array. Okay? The life of my solar array will still be 89% efficient after 25 years. Okay, so how fast are they depreciating those out?
They can only depreciate them 30% after the, I think, first five years or so. What happened in Benton County is the company came in and cut the windmills way down and the state legislators jumped in and said, no, you can't do that. That's been fixed. So the most levered depreciates 30%.
So what does the tax stream look like on 7,000 acres of solar over the span of 25 years?
It, it'll be online tomorrow on Fountain County website and correct.
So they'll look at both sides.
It's actually on Jessica Anderson's site too.
If we give an abatement, it's this much.
Yes, it, it, yes, it shows every, and it shows the average houses, how much tax credit you'll get if these come in. And we cannot release the Dolphin one because it's in, it's in negotiation. But it, it, because it's in three different townships and it's larger, it's a lot more money and a lot more tax savings.
But isn't what it boils down to, the money that that company is using is government money, which is your tax money to begin with?
Yeah.
So we're just robbing Peter and Ben?
Well, what we're doing is in the city of Chicago, we're getting it, or in Minneapolis, or Philadelphia, we're bringing it back to Fountain County. So is crop insurance for farmers, government subsidy. So is lending when they take, and I take my corn there too, because that's where you get the most money for it. Government subsidy. And that's great because that's bringing our tax dollars back to the county. I'm all for it. Set aside property, government subsidy, I'm all for it. It brings money back to Fountain County, my tax dollar.
But if we give around 7,000 or 14,000 acres of farmland, we won't have to worry about our farming companies. Because there are people who drove the trucks and where the high cars and fertilizer and ran the grain elevators and there went all those jobs. And then those people leave Fountain County because they, they can't keep their families here. So they're going to move to a city or move somewhere else and we can't do that.
Government money rises up in 10 years and they don't have it. What are they going to do? They're going to walk away and talk the whole right length.
Well, honestly, you can't leave because what are Reynolds going to do? How are they going to sell that house? There's no way. There are two houses on 136 right now. Those are never going to sell. Never going to sell because we're moral. You tell me, Phil, that there's a possibility of solar, you know, coming, coming to be behind you. So how in the world am I going to get rid of my house? Never going to happen.
People are holding it accountable that what about the rent?
It's already happening.
Okay.
Future generations, it's going to, it's going to be.
It's a really war of all of them. Do you have a copy of it?
You want to go to my table? Go on, call, split for me. I don't want to go. I think I've got everything. Maybe, maybe my board has anything else for tonight.
And it's also not physical property tax because when you take 14,000 acres of land, the grain is stored. You won't have the grain, the tax on the grains sitting in the bins that are stored. You'll lose that tax money too. So it's a bigger picture to look at than just a single tax structure. You better look at it across the board. And if you don't have the, the farmers, you won't have the tractors and the semis and all other property taxes that we get revenue off of.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Are we tabling the ordinance draft for tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. We need an official motion for that in the litter.
Motion and second, closing meeting. All in favor, swing the files, say no. Opposed, say yes. I'll share it. Thank you.